All right, is there anyone who would like to speak to us about any issue that is not on this evening's regular agenda? Come on up and come to the microphone, give us your name and address and uh.
Yep, thank you.
Good evening, council, my name is Matthew Starbuck, I live at one fifteen White Horse Place here in Glenwood Springs. Uh, good evening Glenwood Springs council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to you the financial hardships the Glenwood Springs Affordable Housing Program has caused my family due to circumstances beyond our control. Our hope here is that the city council sees the burden and the impossible situation we are being forced to live under with the current deed restrictions and chooses to lift the restrictions immediately so our family can continue to operate our local business which is a part of this this community and continue to live in the place we call home. We are not trying to pass the expense of our home to anyone else, but with the current deed restrictions limit, sorry, excuse me, the deed restricted limitations, we will not be able to keep up with the upcoming assessment fees or HOA expense expenses were not the fault of the current deed restricted homeowners. We want the same opportunities to succeed as the free market homeowners and the current deed restrictions are making that next to impossible. A group of real estate investors purchased the entirety of the new homes available at White Horse Place except for the three deed restricted units in two thousand and eight. They effectively crippled the ability for the HOA to plan for a coffer by controlling the board and refusing to plan for future maintenance and expenses. This jeopardized the long-term affordability of the deed restricted properties by intentionally keeping the HOA dues minimal while maximizing their own profits. All of the initial investment owners have sold their units now and these ignored expenses are now left to the current homeowners including the three deed restricted units. Our HOA assessment fees for two thousand and eighteen are five thousand dollars for the paint and future assessment fees for the roofing will be an additional ten thousand dollars as well as eight thousand dollars for road repaving and maintenance, this will all be due within five years or less. In addition to these known assessment fees, we will also have eight lift station pumps, six of which are twelve years old and cost six thousand dollars each to replace. There is no way the deed restricted units can weather these escalating HOA assessments without the ability to grab equity out of our homes like the free market houses can. This is putting the deed restricted owners in a terrible position and we have only the following choices. One, to stop the payments to the HOA which jeopardizes the stability of the HOA effectively forfeiting the maintenance of our home and incurring eighteen percent fines and liens also risking litigation against our properties. Two, sell our home with significant loss to compensate for the excessive HOA fees to allow the house to be sold under current Garfield County Housing Authority mortgage HOA fee guidelines. Three, walk away from our home losing all of our life savings, effectively destroying our credit and forcing us to have to relocate out of state. The deed restriction guidelines under Glenwood Springs Housing Authority are not effective and they're jeopardizing our family from making decisions that no responsible homeowner should ever be forced to make. Our family has done nothing wrong to deserve being put in this position by a failing policy that unfortunately has forced three of ten properties under the deed restriction to fall off the deed restriction already. All of our hopes is that the remaining properties at White Horse Place should be removed as a gesture of good faith and to protect the remaining property owners from losing their house and their life savings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us about an item not on this evening's agenda? All right, seeing none, um, I'd just like to make an announcement regarding agenda changes. Agenda item thirteen B on the consent agenda which is ordinance number twenty-one will be considered as a separate item this evening. At this point I would open up to council for any council comments that anyone would like to make. Go ahead Kathy.
I'll go, um, just a, just a really quick comment, I don't know if everyone saw or read Acting City Manager Steve Boyd's column in the Post Independent on November thirtieth about the importance of shopping locally and, uh, you know, how, how important it is to the to the viability of our merchants and our businesses and to the city. So I would just like to reiterate that and, uh, you know, they weathered a really rough period of time, some for two years or more, so it's, um, it's, it's been rough, so I would just encourage everyone shop locally.
Thanks Kathy, any other council comments? No, all right, um, so we would move on to the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding agenda item thirteen B.
Second.
I have a motion by Rick and a second by Kathy to approve the consent agenda excluding item thirteen B, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, item thirteen B is, uh, ordinance number twenty-one, series of twenty seventeen and ordinance of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado repealing a portion of the municipal code pertaining to inclusionary housing requirements, this is the second reading. Is there a motion or discussion on this item? Uh, Shelley.
Um, I would just like to say, you know, I, I have concerns with repealing this ordinance right now, um, and so I will be voting against this tonight, but, and I realize it's the second reading, but I just wanted to clarify that I realize it's not a perfect ordinance, um, but I feel like it's the only ordinance that we have on the books right now that can help people get into a home that they own for inclusionary housing. We haven't had a lot of single-family home building going on in, in the city, so we haven't had a lot of test of the ordinance since the recession was in place. We have a voluntary policy right now on the books for rental housing, but if we repeal this, this ordinance that we have right now, we don't have a policy that, um, were we to have a large development come along that would allow us to build some inclusionary home, homes that are for ownership by workers in our community. So I feel that by only having a policy that supports rental property and that is a voluntary policy we just have a gap in really working towards attainable and affordable housing for workers that live in our community. So even though I know this one's not perfect, I'd like to see us, I just hope that as a council we can come together and really come up with policies that work, um, to help people live in our community and be homeowners here for the long term.
Thanks Shelley, Rick?
Yeah, just very quick, I'd like to say that I think this policy wouldn't be necessarily necessary if affordable housing was easy to reach in the community, I don't think it is. I know that it was in the lockbox for a period of years and not in force and, uh, I think I'd still like to see it back in the lockbox where we develop sort of a comprehensive view of what we could do with affordable housing that would benefit the workers that live in our community or that want to live in our community. I talked with several of our police officers and they can afford to live here and, uh, so I think, um, it is a big issue, um, I'd like to suggest that we as a group come together and, uh, hone sort of a comprehensive policy that not only deals with ownership but probably rental better as well, um, and so I, I won't be voting to take this off the books tonight, but, uh, I'm only doing that in anticipation of coming together, uh, over the next few months to try to craft something that works for Glenwood. Thank you.
Thanks Rick. Kathy?
Um, thanks, I, you know, there are parts of what you guys just said that I would agree with Shelley, I would agree with you that there is definitely a gap that we need, you know, we, we have to do something about attainable housing, affordable housing, whatever you want to, to call it. I also agree with Rick that we need a comprehensive look at this, um, so I think that's, that's a, um, a really good idea and I think that that is something that is in, is on our horizon to, to take a look at this. I guess my big problem with this is this, it was drafted, um, in a significantly different time than economically than we are now and it, uh, I, I believe that there are just better mechanisms, um, that could be useful and if this could be one tool in the toolkit, but I think, as Rick said, I think we need to take a comprehensive look and so I hate to pass this ordinance and then, or reinstate, um, inclusionary housing requirements and then put it, put a, a moratorium on or, you know, put, put that on hold, that seems, um, not like a a very logical way to do business, so.
You know, I do think this could be crafted and I think it, it should be and we should take a closer look at it, I think this particular ordinance does not help reach the American dream that, that we all, um, hold so dear. So I think we need to take a hard look at it and come up with a, a better solution.
Thanks Steve, um, yeah, I would, I would concur that, uh, we do need a comprehensive housing, affordable housing solution, um, and it needs to address housing for people, you know, earning up to, in my opinion, a hundred and twenty percent of very median income. And, uh, which in many communities that might not be considered affordable, but in Glenwood it unfortunately, you know, is or at least workforce housing, whatever you want to call it, um, but, uh, I, I, I don't believe this, this particular ordinance, um, achieves the desired result, I think it's actually counterproductive to the desired result, I think it actually results in fewer housing units being constructed, um, and, uh, therefore I, I will be supporting this ordinance. We don't need to open up a second reading to.
No, you don't, it's not a public hearing.
All right, so, um, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I move to approve ordinance, uh, number twenty-one, series of two thousand and seventeen and ordinance of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado repealing a portion of municipal code pertaining to inclusionary housing requirements.
Second.
I have a motion by Kathy and a second by Steve to approve ordinance number twenty-one, series of two thousand and seventeen. Any further discussion, let's go ahead and call the question.
Trogger yes, Davis yes, Gamba yes, Voorhees no, Cowpies no, motion passes.
All right, moving on, ordinance number twenty-six, series of two thousand and seventeen and ordinance of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty eighteen. This is the first reading, uh, I guess the only reading for this ordinance, um, is there a presentation?
Nope.
Nope.
Just explain it to the public, I'll be happy to if you want me to.
A thirty-second explanation might be, might be helpful.
Absolutely, so you guys passed the twenty eighteen budget, um, recently in, in that budget, uh, we've got to be able to spend the money behind that budget, we've got some carryover expenditures that we're going to spend in twenty eighteen that were originally budgeted in twenty seventeen that got pushed forward, so the total appropriation is something like eighty million dollars altogether and that's what you see in Exhibit A, so by voting to appropriate the funds, that'll allow us to make payroll next year.
That's a good thing. All right, um, any questions for Steve? We'll open this up to the public for any public comment. All right, seeing none, I will close it to the public and bring it back to council for discussion or motion. Um, Kathy?
Um, I would move to approve ordinance number twenty-six, series of two thousand and seventeen and ordinance of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado appropriating funds for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. A second?
I'm not sure who got that first.
Shelley can have that.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Shelley, um, to approve ordinance number twenty-six, series of two thousand and seventeen and ordinance of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty eighteen. Any further discussion, go ahead and call the question.
Trogger yes, Davis yes, Gamba yes, Voorhees yes, Cowpies yes, motion passes, unanimous.
Okay, next item is ordinance number twenty-seven, series of two thousand and seventeen and ordinance of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado amending section zero seven zero point one four zero exterior lighting standards applicable in commercial zone districts, this is a first reading. Do we have a presentation?
Yeah, just have an explanation, an explanation. This, um, ordinance amends the, uh, existing exterior lighting code to extend, um, the ability for the display of holiday lighting through February twenty-eight and then it also adds low voltage bistro lights, um, to the lighting code. Right now they are not allowed.
Okay, does this apply to the, uh, city lighting on, on city right-of-way?
Yes, Grand Avenue.
So that would mean that the, the holiday lighting on Grand Avenue would need to go away in February?
Yes.
Was that our intent, I was thinking that that was intended to be year-round, I'm just.
Yeah.
Really, okay. I will have to clarify, I did not craft this.
Will, will this have a second reading, Carl?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we could, we could, uh, address that in a second reading?
I had a moment there, it's like, which one is we on?
Oh, hold on, hold on, just a second, this says it would allow year-round installation of twinkle lights on downtown trees and allow festival bistro lights to be stal- installed in alleys, so the, the intent is to allow the, uh, the twinkle lights on downtown trees year-round.
Okay, okay, great.
And then.
So can I also get a clarification, like the, the lights over in the, um, in the plaza here, um, the, like the courthouse plaza, would that be considered holiday lights or, I mean, what if they decided to put white lights and keep those all year?
I think would, you know, my, since this is applies to, the twinkle lighting applies to, um, the commercial zone district, this plaza here is in the commercial zone district, so it should be allowed year-round, right? Based on my understanding of it, so I think it would be allowed.
Okay, all right, just, I just wanted to clarify, if they wanted to keep them up, they could.
Okay.
All right, any, any question, other questions for Gretchen?
Gretchen, does this clean up the, the, um, alley lights, would that be bistro lights that are in the Bethel Alley currently?
Correct, it would allow them and then as well as, um, the outdoor seating areas, some folks are putting those in, on the seating areas, so it would allow for that. Okay, but we'll clarify the definition of holiday lighting and twinkle lighting to deal with the courthouse square.
And will this be incorporated in it, incorporated into our new code?
Yes.
All right, Rick?
Uh, just by way of how this comes to us, is someone saying that this is a problem, uh, citywide or are we just sort of updating what we have on the books to be state-of-the-art?
Right, we're updating what's on the books right now, um, there was, uh, some confusion about the definition of holiday lighting and the ability for the, the city to, to put up the, the white lights in the trees and and use those year-round, so right now by the code it's, it's, um, it, it wouldn't be allowed by the current language.
Okay, thanks Rick, uh, Shelley?
So will that, um, the lighting on the trees, what would be the restriction on that boundary?
It looks like that, um, the twinkle lights are defined as string lighting of low voltage not greater than two point five volts per light and that they would be allowed on trees, bushes, landscape features in the commercial zone district. And it does not specify, um, whether or not that's on private or public property. So it looks like it would be allowed on private properties, it's currently written, but like I said, if you.
Okay, and specifically on trees or?
Yep, trees, bushes, landscape.
So not like holiday lighting on building, I'm just trying to, how, how is staff going to know what that line is?
Okay. I think that, that also needs to be clarified.
Okay.
So trying to get it to the G, the GID boundary or something more definable.
Or, yeah, or the DDA boundary or whatever that boundary is, because we have other commercial zones in the district, I'm just wondering.
Correct.
So is it specific to, what was the intent, I'm not sure where, you know, how this originated.
Well, I think probably, you know, it comes out of the DDA, maybe that DDA boundary would be more appropriate, I don't even know if there's going to be a GID boundary as we go forward.
Yeah, probably, yeah, so the DDA boundary is, excuse me, is fairly large, I mean, it would encompass, um, you know, the hotels.
Right, right. Hotel area.
Over, uh, area, the tram, that development, so.
I think it just goes about as far west as the tram.
Yeah, it goes as far west as the, um, Land Rover dealership, that, that little subdivision is the, is the north. Yeah, it goes as far west as the, um, Land Rover dealership. That, that little subdivision is the, is the northern, or the western and northernmost boundary of it.
And then the other question, question I had Gretchen was on the low voltage definition. Where did that come from?
Yes. Um, I think it's just, I, I don't know, to be honest with you. I think it, it's common though. I, I looked on several websites, um, regarding this, the string lighting, and it seems to be pretty common, that, that's the voltage.
Okay.
For the bistro, bistro lights, I know that, uh, um, the voltage gives you probably a light bulb anywhere between one and fifteen watts, so it's very, very, it, it's dim lighting.
Right. Okay, okay. And that, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Alright.
So, we'll bring clarifications for you next time?
For, for second reading, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question that's just a little bit to the side of the lighting?
Sure.
Do we still have our night sky ordinance?
It's, um, incorporated into the, the lighting code, so the fixtures, um, are encouraged, well, required to be, um, you know, the light is down-directed and the fixtures are to be full cutoff.
Okay, so is this kind of exempt from that?
The bistro lighting, I, I think we need to clarify, that's one thing, is that it would be exempt from that, just because it is such low voltage and low watt bulbs.
That it doesn't, doesn't extend very far.
Yeah, it's- Right. Now, there, with the bistro lights, you can get little covers for them.
Hmm.
But I'm not sure that with the, the, um, low wattage of the, the bulbs, it's actually necessary.
Okay.
So.
Okay, yeah, just curious about.
But yeah, that, I noticed that that's something else we should clarify, maybe.
Alright, thanks Gretchen.
Sure.
Yeah, and I think it was intended to be an exception to that night sky ordinance, because you can't, like, you know, put a cover on a twinkle light on a tree.
Right, you can't put it on the trees, and I don't think those tree lights extend very far.
Right.
They don't, like, light the sky.
Right.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks Gretchen. Alright, at this point, I would open it up to the public for any public comments. Seeing none, I will close it to the public and might, bring it back to council for discussion, um, and a motion.
I'd move to approve ordinance number twenty-seven, series of two thousand seventeen, and ordinance of the city of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, amending section oh seven oh, um, one four oh, exterior lighting standards applicable in commercial zone districts.
Second.
Here we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Steve to approve ordinance number twenty-seven, series of two thousand seventeen, and ordinance of the city of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, amending section zero seven zero point one four zero, exterior lighting standards applicable in commercial zone districts. Any further discussion? I would just point out that, you know, for our earlier discussion, you know, we, we will be looking for some clarification on some of these, um, things we talked about here before second reading, so.
You know, I, I'd just like to say I really appreciate staff, uh, putting this together. I think that this ordinance, uh, really helps, uh, downtown, um, vendors and, and, um, you know, it helps create that festival, uh, atmosphere that we talk about in these areas. And I think it was overly restrictive, uh, not to allow such things as bistro lighting and, and these twinkle lights in that downtown commerce areas.
I would concur. Alright, any further discussion? Let's call the question.
Trogger yes, Davis yes, Gamba yes, Voorhees yes, Cowpies yes, motion passes.
Alright, uh, at this point, uh, we are, we have a agenda item to discuss the mission of the Arts and Culture Board. Brian, do you want to make any presentation to us on this?
Again. Uh, so there was a, uh, initial, uh, draft of powers and, and duties for the board, uh, seven points of item, uh, related to wo- promoting awareness, access and appreciation of the arts, advising the city council, uh, creating opportunities for art experience and education, um, increasing interaction among artists, uh, promote knowledge and appreciation. Again, uh, that one might be a little redundant, number five, of cultural forums. Um, make your recommendations to the camp, council on the annual budget appropriations, and then, uh, the last two, consult with local art groups. Um, uh, having worked with, uh, art boards, uh, before, I think these are, are fairly in line with, with, uh, what we're looking for. Some of my thoughts on it, um, as we, we've discussed it, was you, you really want to make sure that the, the board is focused on, uh, developing a comprehensive plan, um, to really leverage all the artistic resources that we have in the city. Um, have a needs assessment, uh, overseeing that process for, uh, not only performance facilities and display facilities of the arts, but also develop a, a strategy, um, for financing those and, uh, acquisition and operations of a, uh, possible performance hall or, or, um, whatever we might look at for a future, for a, a permanent art center home. Um, promote, produce, encourage, uh, performances, uh, by, uh, local artists, uh, and displays, um, not just locally, but also regionally. I think, uh, that focus really needs to look at making Glenwood Springs a, a hub for art and culture programming, uh, throughout the region. Um, and then, of course, supplying information to both staff and, uh, the council, uh, and recommendations, um, acting as that advisory board. And then also, uh, I agree with that last one, to organize groups, um, you know, with the consent of the mayor and the council, uh, perhaps forming things like patrons for the arts, um, looking at different fundraising, uh, strategies. One of the, uh, first things that I'd like to see that council, uh, that, that board meet about is, uh, develop their priorities over the, the coming year. And I think, uh, some of those points that need to be considered would be, um, developing growing programming, uh, sustainably, um, working with startup organizations beyond just dance and, and visual art programs, things like bringing in, uh, organizations like TED Talks or Pocket Film Festivals, uh, different things like that. Developing a high arts, uh, regionally focused concert series, um, providing local entertainment, like a, a comedy night. Uh, different things like that, that might promote, uh, partnership with local businesses. Um, partnering with the Roaring Forks School District to create a theater program. Uh, identifying funding strategies, uh, raise the level of expectations and offerings for the, the community. Um, you know, most facility, art facilities have a single discipline, and that's what we've seen in our community also in the past, is very, uh, dance-centric. And I think, uh, what we heard from a lot of the, uh, applicants for the art board was a desire to have a full spectrum and comprehensive, uh, offering of cultural opportunities for the community. Um, looking at technology and how we can advance that, so, uh, our arts programming and arts facilities don't feel out of date before we even start programming in them. And then again, uh, one, helping local community organizations and artists and performers develop into a regional and even national prominence, and also to create the culture and the flavor of the community, uh, and enhance the quality of life. And, and help with marketing also, which is going to be a, a real big point. Um, something that I think I would, uh, recommend or discourage from i- is probably not to give, uh, the board an independent budget, to give them, um, control or oversight over a s- a separate budget. And then looking at, uh, how we can measure success of, of what the council's vision is for arts and community. That's my thoughts.
Alright, thanks Brian. Any questions for Brian? Alright, um-
Good summary.
Yep, thanks for the summary. Uh, for the public's benefit, we did interview seventeen applicants to our Arts and Culture Board, um, today. Uh, and we will, following this agenda item, we will be voting on those appointments. Only, only one of those, uh, applicants is, is here, and I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if, if, uh, you have any thought you want to share with us regarding, uh, what the powers and duties the Arts and Culture Board should have, or, um, or anybody else in the public, uh, who might want to, uh, comment on this, now would be your opportunity. I know Chief Olson has a lot of thoughts on this, so.
Deep thoughts.
Yeah, deep thoughts. Alright, um, we can, if, if anyone feels like to, bringing up something as, as council discusses this, so, we can do that as well. Um, so I'll bring it back to council at this point for any thoughts on, on the powers and duties of this board. It seems to me like this, uh, seven item list that, uh, we have in our ordinance to create this board seems pretty comprehensive. I think it covers a lot of the, the thoughts and ideas that were presented to us this afternoon and this morning by the, uh, applicants. Is there anything anyone sees that should be on there that isn't, or shouldn't be on there that is? Oh, sorry Kathy, I mean Shelley.
Just had a couple of notes that I put down, and I don't know where these go, and if, if we want to actually add anything to the formal, you know, list of duties of the board, or if this is, will go under more, kind of, goals for the first year or something, but, um, a couple of things that I may want to clarify in that list, or, or see us work towards. And we heard some of this from the applicants today, and I, on a side point, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who applied to the board. I feel like we have an incredible pool of talented applicants to choose from. It's going to be hard to make the choices, but, uh, I really appreciate all the interest in this board. So, but in addition to the duties that we listed, um, I guess I'd really like to see this board work to, work with all the stakeholders in the arts in the community, to really bring them together and build, build a community of different organizations to support arts in Glenwood Springs, whether that's, you know, CMC, uh, some nonprofits, specific groups of artists, you know, whatever that may be, or whether it's a group that's promoting, um, events or theater. But, but to really bring them together so that we can figure out as a community how to work together to really strengthen arts in Glenwood Springs. So, I'd like to see that specifically written, written in as one of the duties, is really to bring those partners and stakeholders together. And a couple, the purpose of that is, A, to not have it all fall under the umbrella of one organization like this board, but to really make it a grassroots, community-based effort on the arts. I think we'll get more creativity that way and more voice from the community. So, um, and then as part of that, working with different groups is to really develop, uh, fundraising and development plans so that we can raise some funding around the arts. And I think having those different stakeholders, strong stakeholders as part of that group will help do that. And, and having some leadership from this board. Um, the other thing as part of that, having those different stakeholders, is to really engage, how do we best use all the public and maybe private facilities that we have in town that are underused? And off the top of my head, you know, I'm thinking of the Masonic Building by the post office, the public school buildings that we have. Um, you know, I hear from the school district that those buildings are available and open for use. When we talk to some of the groups that try to get in there, you know, I just think there are communication issues that could be bridged there, so, things like that. CMC has facilities, um, the city has facilities, so how do we put those to their highest use? Um, and then, the other thing I'd like to see this board do maybe the first year or two, is come up with, maybe it's two, maybe it's four, one every season, but signature arts events for Glenwood Springs. And, you know, we used to have the Fall Art Festival, which we loved. I think a lot of the community loved that. It raised money. There were, a lot of the businesses were patrons and people in the community were patrons of that event. Um, I hated to see it go away, but it'd be nice to have signature art events that put Glenwood on the sp- Glenwood on the map in Colorado for arts. So, I guess that's it. I've, I've talked enough. That's my list.
Thanks, Shelley. Kathy?
Oh, thanks. Um, one of our applicants tonight, uh, in, in this afternoon's, uh, group, um, said something that I thought was, was really, was really good, and I jotted it down, and, uh, that was Nathan Stowe. I thought, uh, he, he's, his quote was, um, "The arts are the mortar that holds the community together." And I, I thought, you know, I think that applied to, to arts, to arts, you know, events. It was sort of involved in that, that, that particular question that we asked. And I think that that's really true, and I think that we've heard that time and time again from all of the applicants, that, um, that the arts help, um, bring people out and, and, uh, make a more cohesive, uh, community. So, um, so I think that those were, were, uh, great, great things. I think, um, you know, Shelley, some of the things you mentioned were great. Compre- I think we do need a comprehensive plan. Um, we definitely need the needs assessment. Um, we need to explore those partnerships, whether it's with, you know, and this group can do that. Funding is absolutely, there are several, several of our applicants mentioned, um, you know, art centers or, you know, uh, performing arts centers, um, and we'll be funding for that because that's not something the city has, has funds available for, so. Um, so, you know, uh, looking for grants. There were really a lot of great ideas, and I guess I would encourage those, those people who, who applied and who may not get on this board tonight, to continue to contribute to this effort because, uh, I, I think part of what we'll do is some community outreach. And, um, and I, and, you know, keep, keep those ideas coming, because after all, this is, you know, it is creative. The other thing that I thought was interesting too is that, you know, we think of art as, um, you know, paintings, or, you know, dance, or, um, you know, theater, things, things like that. And, um, you know, we also were talking about, you know, food as art, you know, and there, so I think we need to sort of expand our vision as to what we classify as art.
Wine and beer is art.
Wine and, yeah, that's good too.
Is now a good time to talk about bronze sculptures?
Yes. A bronze sculpture of beer. Just kidding. Alright, thanks. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that was fine. The only thing, the only other thing I, you know, again, thank you to all of the applicants, so.
Yep.
It was, um, a great discussion today about, about possibilities.
I, I would, I would concur. Um, going back to some of Shelley's comments, um, I would maybe suggest, I, I agree, uh, I, I didn't get them all written down, but at least two of them, I'm, I'm thinking there's some maybe, maybe minor modifications of the, uh, powers and duties, um, list that might address a couple of your comments on, on number four. It's currently reads to promote increased interaction among artists and opportunities for growth and exposure. We could modify that to promote increased interaction and collaboration among artists, comma, art-related organizations, and opportunities for growth and exposure. I don't know, and that might address the collaboration issue. On, um, item six, where it says to make recommendations to the city council with respect to annual budget appropriations for the arts, that could possibly be amended to read, to make recommendations to the city council with respect to, um, fundraising and annual budget appropriations for the arts. and annual budget appropriations for the arts," so.
Yeah, that would be a good.
Yeah, um, to change this, this is a resolution, is that correct?
No, this actually will go on the code, so this is just a working copy that we're gonna bring brac- bring back as an ordinance.
Okay, okay, so, alright. And then I, I actually have a question for Brian, um, sorry, I should've asked you when you were up here. Uh, I know that, am I correct that we budgeted for, this is kinda tangential, but we budgeted for an events coordinator for 2018, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. There was a lot of discussion by a lot of the applicants today about events and the need to create events. And Shelley mentioned we want four signature events. I, I don't disagree with that, I think we could also do a number of, of less, um, I don't know what, how you wanna call it, um, you know, large-scale events. And, and it could be a good benefit to the downtown and to the overall community. Do we know how the events coordinator might fit in with this board? Or is there any relationship there? In other words, is the events coordinator over here and the board's over here? Or are we, is there, is there some thought that perhaps there could be a, uh, some involvement by that person with this?
Yeah, I, I think the, uh, the, um, purpose of the board in promoting, uh, culture in, in the city, goes hand in hand with, with the community events. So, uh, I think the intent has always been for this, uh, marketing special event coordinator to kind of fall under arts and events as kind of one whole budget, um, and work with this board to identify events that, that fulfill their purposes.
Okay.
Could, could they take, could they attend these meetings, you know, as well?
Yes, yeah.
As maybe, as maybe one staff is on.
Yeah, uh, we have not assigned who that staff member will be, that will be the staff right before this board yet. But, yeah, I imagine, uh, our, our programs coordinator, who's Tom Schwenk, uh, right now, who is, uh, helping me, uh, put together the arts programming, uh, would be involved with this board. And then whoever we select as the, uh, special events coordinator would also probably be fairly involved.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Rick?
Yeah, I'll just be real brief here. I think this is a sort of a watershed event in the history of Glenwood. You know, the city's going to facilitate and, you know, not stand in the way of good ideas, but I think we had at least a couple of our candidates today that said that this will be a more reliable way of, uh, looking at the arts and providing art services to the whole community. And so it is sort of a, a new day and a new way to sort of look at what art can be and to expand, I think, some of the activities that we've already heard about today that, uh, you know, maybe weren't available to people in the past. So, the other couple of things I was struck with is sort of the outreach to, uh, youth in particular and not necessarily youth classes per se, although that's a great part of it. I think involving younger people is really critical. And we also heard from, uh, some of the candidates today too about the necessity to, uh, within these networks that we're creating to, uh, reach out to the Hispanic community and, uh, look at trying to incorporate some of the ethnicity that we have. I read the, uh, story in the Independent this morning that, uh, the Glenwood schools, or the Roaring Fork School District rather, is now majority-minority. And I think that, uh, as we think about the future and, uh, at this watershed that we're talking about, it would be really good to try to incorporate activities that fit with that and especially to celebrate that sort of culture. So, very impressed by the candidates we've had. I think that the mission of, uh, the board and the role of the board was talked about as well by several candidates. And I think that everybody sort of agrees that the new group that we're going to appoint tonight will be advisory to the council. But I also heard the other theme from, from most of the candidates that they, you know, really wanna get on with it. I think there's some pent-up demand in the community for this kind of work. And I think that, um, getting on with it means that we had a lot of candidates who appeared to me anyway to wanna roll up their sleeves and get going, so I'm pretty happy with the whole day.
Thanks, Rick. Uh, Kathy?
Oh, just one other thing, or two other things. Um, another thing that we heard was the regional aspect to this. And I think, you know, trying to unite particularly like the Roaring Fork Valley, the Highway eighty-two corridor, you know, and, uh, and sort of bringing all of those, those arts together, talk about art tours and stuff. I have a question though, maybe for Carl? Can we put a youth representative on this board?
You can do whatever you'd like.
We can do that?
You could, and I, that actually would be a kind of a, I mean, from my perspective, having kids that are in the arts, that would be a really cool thing.
Would it require another interview session?
Yes, two days.
Um, would, would that be in place of one of these board members? Or would we want to do it in?
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna say, you guys, if you wanted to change the com- composition to have a couple of extra ad hoc youth representatives or something like that, I think we could, we could definitely do that.
I think that's a great idea.
What's, yeah. I mean, it's a great civic involvement thing too, if you could find some kids who wanted to get involved, you know.
I, I personally would like to see more youth involved than alphas, you know, just as a, as a way to introduce them to, you know, civic squad one.
It might, it might be a good idea to do, um, just thinking back to the lunch session we had with CMC, maybe we get a high school student or a youth and also a CMC student, just a thought.
Okay. I, I, I do think that's a good idea, even if you said on all, all boards, it'd be, I think it'd be a good educational experience and it would perhaps provide a perspective to some of our boards that we don't otherwise have.
I know my son was, when he was in high school, was a youth rep on the arts record board and enjoyed it.
So, um, we don't have an ordinance or anything before us to consider. I, I guess the only action we would take is to direct staff to prepare such an ordinance?
Yeah, uh, we're actually, as I recall, we're in between first and second reading.
Oh, we are, okay.
Uh, I know it was a really long time ago, but we have an pending ordinance on this. Um, with those changes though, somebody, 'cause I, I didn't have a paper copy that I was working off of, there were a couple of good comments you guys had, um.
I could read it, I could probably read it into the.
Into the record, we can pull it out from there, yeah, that would be great. Um, and we'll get that wrapped up and back and then I guess we'll throw in some version of an ad hoc edition of a, a youth representative or two. Okay.
I think that sounds good, um, alright, so we, do we even need a motion on this, or just?
No, I think we, i- if, if the list is pretty good with the changes that you're about to give so that Catherine or John or somebody with a pen can say.
Is everyone on council okay with those proposed changes to number four and number six? Alright, so I think the language on number four would read as follows. "To promote increased interaction and collaboration among artists, comma, art-oriented or art-related organizations and opportunities for growth and exposure." Maybe it's not a comma, it might be an N, wanna be an N. Fix, fix the grammar to make it an appropriate grammatical. Yeah. I done been ed- edemicated at one point.
So, Mr. Mayor, would you think about maybe in that clause, uh, including the greater community, increased interaction among artists, art-related companies and?
Well, I think, I think that that's, I think that's in number one, "To promote awareness, access and appreciation of fine performing and practical arts for city residents and visitors." Yeah, that, that's my thinking on that anyway, so. Is everyone okay with that? Okay, and then number six would read "To make recommendations to the city council with respect to fundraising and annual budget appropriations for the arts."
I would just say funding. I wouldn't say fundraising, I would just say funding.
Funding.
Funding and annual budget appropriations? Okay, okay, that's fine.
Like, you know, I just think that the key to the vitality of the, the arts in this community is going to be that fundraising. Um, I'm not saying you have to use that word, but, you know, there's.
I think that needs to be somehow.
We're not gonna fund, uh, near enough money to bring this community up to the level of arts per- perci- perci-
Participation.
... contemplation that we would really like to see, you know. So, hopefully we can be out there searching for grants and, and, uh, private donations to bring us to that point.
Can I add, there was one other one that I'd love to get the council's input or opinion on, which is that, um, aspect of kind of evaluating facilities for arts in the community and finding, you know, working on the, with different stakeholders and partnerships to get that highest use of, of what we have. Before we look at trying to build something new, I'd like to make sure we're using, you know, what's out there.
I, I agree, Shelley, and that's kind of why I, I said, you know, exploring partnerships should be part of the.
On where? Do we have one that speaks to facilities or?
We, we don't really, it, 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 in a big umbrella sense, it might be under number two to advise the city council in connection with all matters relating to the artistic and cultural development of the city, you know.
Okay.
I mean, I, yeah, I know it's not, it's very tangen- tangential, um, but, uh, arguably, understanding what our facility, existing facilities are and our facility needs are, to me, would be related to that, but.
Well, and campus board also develops sort of a vision statement or something on their own.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, I, I mean, I think that you guys can provide some guidance, but I think they're really gonna start to hone in on what, you know, in that list, all of our boards and commissions have a wide variety of, of things that they could be working on. And I think each one, as the makeup changes, will focus on the things that they see as the immediate needs in that area of, of expertise.
And they set their own, some goals.
Yeah, they set their own goals and things like that, so I don't know that you need to hone it too, too precisely.
Okay.
Can we put bronze statues?
Yes, more bronze statues.
Yeah, sorry. Alright, um, so, so, I, we don't even need to really take a vote.
No, you don't, I, you gotta get to the fun part, which is the, the voting part that, Steve's gonna be keeping track of.
So, so. Alright, so staff has, has adequate, um, direction on that one?
I think so.
Okay, so next item, we get to vote on our seven candidates and, hang on here. You guys have already been voted, I've been, you know, keeping track for a minute here. Uh, we are gonna vote for a total of seven, but we will appoint seven members and one alternate, so the eight, um. Okay, um, and, uh, based on prior precedent, we will be, um, uh.
Are you, are you fixing mics or yours?
He's changing capitals. Um, and, and based on prior precedent, um, if, if all the candidates or all the appointees don't receive a minimum of
A majority.
Majority of vote, vote, then we.
Do it again.
Do it again, yeah.
You have to get at least four votes.
Yeah, exactly.
How many are we voting?
I'm voting for seven, but we can only vote for two in the bottom group. And, and you don't have to vote for two in the bottom group, you can't vote for more than two in that bottom group.
Are we doing this alternate? Did we just?
No, we're just voting for seven and then the alternate will be whoever is the youth.
Runner-up.
Runner-up.
Yeah. Yeah, no, you just, you just have to tally, your job is to tally.
I'm a tally man.
Staff's tissue.
Have, are you ready?
I'm ready.
I'll break out the song real quick here, you know.
Stephanie Davis, Jonathan Gorst, Sandy Haber, Brianna Starbuck, Nathan Stowe, Bonnie Cradaville, um, Scott Norville. Stephanie Davis, Jonathan Gorst, Judy O'Donnell, Brianna Starbuck, Nathan Stowe, Bonnie Cradaville, Scott Norville. Stephanie Davis, Jonathan Gorst, Sandy Haber, Brianna Starbuck, Nathan Stowe, Bonnie Cradaville, Scott Norville. Stephanie Davis, Jonathan Gorst, Sandy Haber, Mary Noon, Nathan Stowe, Annie Bell, Scott Norville. Stephanie Davis, Jonathan Gorst, Mary Noon, Brianna Starbuck, Nathan Stowe, Bonnie Cradaville, Scott Norville.
That's it?
Good?
Alright, do you wanna know all of them? Everybody's total? Okay, I have one for Annie Bell, five Stephanie Davis, five for Jonathan Gorst, three for Sandy Haber, four for Bonnie Cradaville, two for Mary Noon, five for Scott Norville, one for Judy O'Donnell, four for Brianna Starbuck, five for Nathan Stowe.
So, everybody has four more to say, yeah?
So I s- so is it correct that, um, I mean, the, the three that rece- the four that received five votes are Stephanie Davis, Jonathan Gorst, Nathan Stowe and, and Scott Norville, right?
Right.
So they're, they all received unanimous votes. And then there's two that received four votes, that's Bonnie Cradaville and Brianna Starbuck, right? So, they're the top six vote-getters. And then next is Sandy Haber with three, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that would be the seven. And then after that, no one else has received a majority, so, uh.
So of the remaining candidates, consistent with what you guys have done before, of the remaining candidates, which are, I can't see them, so you're gonna have to remuster circle the three there.
Yeah, so we have seven, so now we need, so cross out Stephanie Davis, Jonathan Gorst, um, uh, Sandy Haber.
Yeah.
Um, Brianna Starbuck and Nathan. Um, Brianna Starbuck and Nathan Stowe, Bonnie Cradaville and Scott Norville. And then vote for one of the remaining, um, does it matter if the, if the, uh, alternate is outside of the, do we wanna discuss that, whether the alternate is outside of the city limits or not? Or do we care?
They should be.
Yeah, typically it's somebody inside the city limits.
Since we already, especially since we already have two.
Since you already have two from outside the city limits.
Can we just vote for one or?
Yeah, we just vote for one person.
Okay, Steve, are you ready? Okay.
Yep.
Mary Noon? Mary Noon? Judy O'Donnell? Judy O'Donnell? Mary Noon?
Mary Noon three, Judy O'Donnell two.
Alright, so Mary Noon will be the, uh, uh, alternate and the rect- board will consist of Stephanie Davis, Jonathan Gorst, Sandy Haber, Brianna Starbuck, Nathan Stowe, Bonnie Cradaville and Scott Norville. Alright. Moving on, uh, do we have a report from the city manager?
I didn't get anything from you guys.
Okay.
Nothing from us.
Okay, wasn't there, uh, nevermind. Trying to keep this semi-appropriate, you know, but, uh, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Anything from the city attorney?
Uh, just one thing, I regret to inform the council that we didn't receive a notice to terminate on the library contract today. Um, they just couldn't put it together financially to make it work viably, um, at, at the numbers involved. Um, we went ahead and had the mayor sign a release of the earnest money, um, today. So, with that, I talked to Deborah earlier today and, uh, her recommendation is that we probably take a look at including, using it for some programming, um, in the short term while, while we're figuring out what to do with it. Um, but anyway, um, I'm hoping to get some of the diligence information, uh, from Mr. Edmonds that, that led, a lot of it was, um, renovation costs, that were really just more than, than made sense, um, to be able to, to use it, so, uh, that's all I got for you.
Alright. Yeah, we, we may wanna, um, have a discussion in a future council meeting as to what.
Yeah, it suggests maybe we wait until after the beginning of the new year. I know that December twenty first is pretty packed and you guys were scheduling a special meeting on the eighteenth as well.
Right, right.
So, um, but I do, I think we wanna figure out, like I said, hopefully I can pull together some of that information from Mr. Edmonds, it'll be confidential obviously, but it'll give us some idea of, of what some of the issues were that he was running into and, and not being able to make that work, so.
Alright, that's unfortunate. Um, to my knowledge, there's no incoming or outgoing correspondence, I need to bring anyone's attention. So, um, at this point, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the.